Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're back in session for City Council Ordinance 23-0381, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. I'm Mayor Costello, councilman from the 11th District and Chair of the Committee. Joining me to my left, Council President Nick Mosby, Councilman James Torrance, 7th District, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District, and my far right, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District. To my immediate right is Marguerite Kern, staff to the Committee. We're also joined by members of Mayor Brandon Scott's team, as well as Council President Nick Mosby's team. We're here tonight for BOPA, Baltimore Office of Promotion and the Arts. Who is going to be presenting on behalf of BOPA? And sir, you are...
Brian Lyles.
Yep. Brian Lyles, Board Chair, correct?
Board Chair, yes.
Before we begin, couple of quick ground rules. If you have a cellphone, please turn it to mute, silent, vibrate, or any other setting which does not make noise. We have this new technology in the council chambers, which we're all getting used to. You will see two buttons at the bottom of your device. When you press the button on the far right, this thing will light up red. That means your microphone is on. When you are not speaking, please turn your microphone off. These microphones are very sensitive. They will pick up whispers, sniffles, breathing, et cetera. Mr. Lyles, how many slides do you have in your slide deck?
I think it's just four.
Just four? Okay. What I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to you. I'm going to ask you to introduce everyone that's on your team, all six folks. Well, you've already introduced yourself. If you could say their first and last name, as well as their position title within the organization, and then I'll turn it over to you for the presentation. How long do you anticipate needing to complete the presentation?
About 15 minutes or so.
Can we keep it to 10? Outstanding. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The floor is yours, sir.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Costello and council members, I am Brian Lyles, as I mentioned, President and Chair of the Board of Directors of BOPA, the Baltimore Office of Promotion and the Arts. On behalf of the Board and the dedicated staff of BOPA...
Sir, before we get into that, can you introduce everyone on your team, first and last name and position title with the organization? Thank you, sir.
Certainly. Seated next to me, we have Brian Wentz, our CFO. And on the far side, we have Jaclyn Downs, who is our Senior Director of Programming and the Arts Council, and as well as being the key person responsible for Artscape. Behind me, we have two of our board members, Vice Chair Michael Schechter. We also have Frank McNeil, Secretary of the Board and current Chair of our Governance Committee. And we have Todd Johannick, who is our incoming interim CEO. On behalf of the Board and the dedicated staff of BOPA, I want to express our gratitude for the opportunity to come before you today and to discuss the future of Baltimore's primary organizer and presenter of artistic and cultural programming for the residents of our great city.
And sir, if you could get a little closer, just a little... Yep, that's perfect. Thank you.
As I mentioned, I am joined today by some of our board, some of my board colleagues, in addition to senior staff, and a number of other committed and accomplished members of our team are here in attendance. I want to take this occasion to officially introduce our new interim CEO, Todd Johannick, who was just appointed yesterday, and who is with us this evening. Todd, who is an accomplished documentarian and filmmaker, brings a fierce passion for the arts and a keen appreciation for the ability of expansive cultural and artistic programming to lift the sights and prospects of city residents from youngest to oldest. As we work to strengthen BOPA's relationships with our many stakeholders, we have full confidence that Todd will provide a steady hand in this interim period and demonstrate a truly collaborative approach in guiding the organization to fulfill its mandate to serve Baltimore's diverse creative community and to produce the celebrated community events that also define our great city. I come before you today with no illusions. The reputation of BOPA has been damaged, and a number of you have lost confidence in the organization. The entire Board and the staff take this very seriously and are utterly committed to reestablishing the trust necessary for us to be true partners in supporting, promoting, and enabling Baltimore's rich artistic and cultural community for the benefit of all city residents, north, south, east, and west. Toward that end, I sincerely hope that this discussion and what we will share with you marks a new beginning for BOPA and a new approach to collaborating with you consistently, listening more to your concerns, the needs and desires of your constituents, and to pursuing our common goal of finding new opportunities to invigorate our neighborhoods and our entire city with a shared experience of art and culture. Let me be clear, the Baltimore Office of Promotion and the Arts doesn't exist but for the purpose of serving as the city's primary facilitator of major events and festivals, as well as serving as the provider of grants of over $800,000 annually in support of local artists and creatives. We also serve as the film office for the city, as well as the manager of major venues, the Bromo-Seltzer Arts Tower, the School 33 Arts Center, the top of the world observation level, the Cloisters Castle, and the organizer of the Baltimore Farmers Market. Any idea that BOPA is interested in defining itself as a fully autonomous entity divorced from its responsibilities to the city is categorically false. Admittedly, we are in a period of transition. Since January, following the departure of Donna Sawyer, I took on the primary responsibility of day-to-day management of BOPA, supported by our excellent senior leaders and other staff. During this time, several longtime board members, including former Chair Anna Cambon, also ended their tenures. We have also seen the departure of several senior staff members, while we also attract new staff. It has been our focus to identify a full-term interim CEO, given my limitations due to other responsibilities, and to form the search committee comprised of board, artistic, and community leaders to identify interested and qualified local, regional, and national candidates for the permanent CEO position. To assist with this process, we have hired the executive search firm M. Oppenheim, which has conducted a number of local searches and specializes in nonprofits and the arts. Let me assure you that this is among our highest priorities, and we intend to involve you in the process as the pool of candidates narrows. Suffice it to say, we are moving forward, and with the utmost commitment to working closely with you, with the Office of the Mayor, and with leaders of our cultural institutions, as well as our network of local creatives. Let me briefly highlight some of the things BOPA has been focused on in these first five months of the year, in addition to the matter of CEO succession. First and foremost, we knew we had to focus on the return of Artscape, which is returning September 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. Since January, our current team has been working with the Mayor's Office on logistics to bring this event back, utilizing its traditional footprint of Bolton Hill and continuing along the Mount Royal Corridor, north on Charles Street, and into Station North. This has involved careful coordination with our cultural partners, MICA, the University of Baltimore, The Lyric, and of course, the BSO at the Mahihauf Symphony Hall, not to mention the careful coordination needed with city agencies like the Department of Transportation. We are having regular meetings with the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture, and I personally been in regular contact with Deputy Mayor Justin Williams, former Chief of Staff Chesia Cager, and more recently with City Administrator Faith Leach and interim Chief of Staff Martin James. As for our other events and programs, in Baltimore, we showcased hundreds of students at our Maryland Region Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. We brought this to Baltimore several years ago, serving as the regional affiliate for this national competition, which is the nation's longest-running and most prestigious creative teen recognition program for students in grades seven to 12. This year, 1,667 teams from Baltimore and the surrounding region submitted 4,200 works of visual and literary art. This year, we partnered with the Baltimore Museum of Art, which was the location for the award ceremony. Later, a total of 45 area students from our local competition received medals at the national level. To further highlight local competitors, our School 33 Arts Center gave an opportunity for some of the students to showcase their visual art in a free exhibition. April saw the return of the Baltimore Farmers Market, which runs every Sunday, rain or shine, from April to December. And on the first Sunday of every month during spring and summer, we extend market hours to present entertainment from local musicians and other performers. During the first weekend in May, we held the annual open studio tour, where more than 100 artists from all over the city welcomed visitors into their studios to see their work and to actually see them at work. Throughout the calendar year, BOPA coordinates an increasing number of activities for artists to engage with the public, to showcase and sell art, and to receive support for their endeavors. The Bromo-Seltzer Arts Tower provides highly coveted studio spaces for artists, in addition to gallery space for special exhibitions. Likewise, School 33 provides studio spaces and its own gallery spaces, I mentioned before. And literally, at the top of the world, the observation level, at Baltimore's World Trade Center, at the Inner Harbor, we host exhibitions for local artists. BOPA continues to provide subgrants and support to local artists and arts organizations. One of the ways BOPA provides additional impact is its ability to raise additional funds, and throughout the years, our relationship with M&amp;T Bank is a prime example of our aim to partner with the local business community. M&amp;T Bank is a longtime sponsor of the Janet and Walter Sondheim Art Prize. This year is the 18th year for this competition, and this year's finalists were recently announced. The winner will be announced in August during a celebration at the Walters Art Museum, which will host an installation of the finalists' art. M&amp;T's Janet and Walter Sondheim Art Prize presents $30,000 to the winning artist. I should also mention here that in 2022, BOPA was entrusted by the city with $500,000 to distribute to artists and arts organizations throughout the city as part of the ARPA Artist's Relief Grant Program. This was in addition to the roughly $160,000 raised for the Baltimore Artist's Emergency Relief Fund back in 2020, a fund which was inspired through a partnership between 20 artists and arts organizations at the beginning of the pandemic, and which was distributed to local artists in need. As you know, on New Year's Eve, we worked with the city to present the annual Baltimore's New Year's Eve spectacular, and coming up soon on July 4th, just like last year, we will present music and fireworks at the Inner Harbor in collaboration with Waterfront Partnership. Looking ahead, in 2024, we will bring back the very popular Baltimore Book Festival. Keep in mind that in June 2022, COVID was still an issue, and it was not possible for us to plan the book festival in its traditional time, period of early fall. And then, as you know, Artscape was scheduled for this coming fall, making it very difficult to coordinate two major festivals at the same timeframe. We are currently in discussions to bring back Light City in 2025. Serving as Baltimore's Arts Council, we hosted the Baltimore City Delegation of Maryland Arts Day in February, in addition to interactions with artists throughout the year. Also, continuing to serve as the Administrator for the city's Public Arts Commission, we help to not only conserve existing public art, but to provide new art. Of the conservation efforts, our most recent example was the $62,000 restoration of the Redwood Arch in Councilman Costello's district. This is a prime example of how BOPA can convene the right combination of talent and resources and community partnerships. The Maryland State Arts Council and Downtown Partnership contributed to that funding. BOPA recently negotiated an agreement with Loyola University for a summer art-at-work program, which will employ youth through the city's Youth Works Program to work part-time alongside professional teaching artists to create mural artwork in the York Road Corridor. And throughout all of our work, BOPA staff has worked hard to make sure we are reaching more creatives in the BIPOC, Black Indigenous, and people of color communities. This can be seen through the artists in our exhibitions and those who apply for and receive grants and awards. A few internal notes I want to mention. After last year's budget hearings, we listened to suggestions from you. We have begun to add both creatives and City Hall representatives to our board. Artist and art curator Jeffrey Kanna is one of our newest board members, as is B.R. Hammond Owens, who works for the city's Department of Housing and Community Development. I know Debbie Dorsey, who runs our film office, worked with Councilman Torrance to implement recommendations he made to us, to implement coordination between film productions and the communities in which they locate especially, to better streamline the notification process to residents. Debbie has also been working with the state legislature to generate additional tax credits, which can be used to attract more film productions and to generate more economic benefits for the city and the state, which we know are important to the mayor and the governor. I want to emphasize the considerable economic impact that the film industry brings to our city. Since 2011, the Film Office has coordinated production activities that have generated over $1.5 billion. Finally, let me share some more news from our board, which was also, which also represents more of the positive changes that are happening at BOPA and that have happened at BOPA during the past few months. We immediately knew we had to improve communications with City Hall and the Mayor's Office, so we did that. At the state level, we continued to stay in close contact with the Maryland State Arts Council and couldn't be more grateful for the roughly $750,000 that IMSAC provided BOPA during this fiscal year. We also completed our first strategic planning process, the first ever in the 40-year history of this organization. That strategic plan was completed by the Board Strategic Planning Committee earlier this year, and now after presentation and some additional input by BOPA's staff and final board approval, we will begin to share that plan later this month with you individually, with City Hall, and the community. Continuing to move forward beyond our regular updates to the city and city council through the front burner reports and select interactions with council people, we now plan to have more personal interaction with you and all of our city council members throughout the year. On a personal note, I'm honored to have had the opportunity to step into the role of interim CEO. Board members typically do not have the opportunity to experience the day-to-day work of staff and all that they make possible. It's been extremely gratifying to work closely with our very talented professional team, who cares so deeply for our local artists and create the programming that enhances quality of life for young and old alike. BOPA is not just an acronym. It's a team of people who dedicate their time and talents, and it's a network of tremendously creative individuals across our city, all dedicated to enhancing the cultural fabric of Baltimore and increasing the social, emotional, and economic impact that art and culture make possible. (pause) Have none of the flights unless we want to go over the budget, the projected budget numbers?
There's a little bit of a delay on that.
Yeah.
Clicker. There you go. Right.
This is our current mission, slightly, it will be slightly enhanced after our strategic plan is approved, but to enhance arts and culture programming for the benefit of all people in Baltimore, to promote access, appreciation, and participation in all aspects of the arts in Baltimore. And our fiscal 2024 goals are to successfully coordinate and produce the return of Baltimore's beloved book festivals, Artscape and the Baltimore Book Festival, continue to support artists and independent arts organizations through programming opportunities, re-granting, and professional development support, and to continue to improve BOPA's relationship with the Mayor's Office and City Council. And these are just major items from our proposed budget?
Mr. Lyles, thank you for the very thoughtful and comprehensive presentation. Certainly appreciate it. I want to start with some concerns around governance and administration of the organization. These concerns have been pretty heavy for me over the last year and a half. In January of this year, there was a change made in leadership, and the CEO of the organization separated from the organization. And at that time, you assumed responsibility for the day-to-day operations of the organization?
Yes.
Were you compensated during that period of time?
No. I am still a volunteer.
I can't tell you how much I respect I have for your commitment to the organization being willing to do that. That said, I have to say it is quite peculiar, and I have never heard of an instance where the Chair of the Board was running the day-to-day operations of an organization.
I think there have been other instances, I can't name them right now, where board chairs have come into that position, if there has been a loss of the CEO, chief executive. It's not unusual?
Shortly after the separation of the former CEO in the organization, would you please provide me with a timeline for when the organization initiated efforts to seek a permanent and/or interim CEO?
Well, we started that right away. The Board initiated discussions and discussed the need to hire a search firm to do that. We knew we had some initial items that we needed to solve first, and those were first and foremost. Just needed to make sure we had the right staff and the operations in line. We wanted to make sure everything was continuing as it needed to. I personally needed to know, as I mentioned before, as Board Chair, I don't normally, would normally not know the day-to-day operations. I needed to learn those in order to address any questions or concerns, or even to talk about the responsibility of a CEO coming onboard. So those are things that I needed to learn, and I think as the Board, we needed to learn before we could actually initiate that search. Now, that search for the interim began, well, the process began almost immediately, but recently, once we hired M. Oppenheim, and they let us know that they could assist in the selection of the interim CEO free of charge. We jumped on that opportunity, and that's why we have Mr. Todd Johannick here at this time.
Todd, I want to thank you for taking on this new responsibility. You and I have a number of friends in common who speak very highly of you, some that you may know, others that you may not be aware that are mutual friends. Can't hear me? Speak up a little. Oh.
Sure.
That's, yep. So, very excited to get to know you. Going back to the timeline, so after the separation of the previous CEO in the organization, you immediately took day-to-day responsibility for the organization, Mr. Lyles?
Yes.
And shortly thereafter, you engaged a firm to seek out an interim CEO or a CEO?
No, we discussed the process for seeking out an interim and a permanent CEO. That contract wasn't initiated until just a little over a month ago.
The contract...
With the search firm.
Which search firm was it?
M. Oppenheim.
Okay, and that's the search firm that you used to find Todd as well?
Yes.
Can I ask what, I'm not asking for, pardon me, I will ask, why did you not seek out a permanent CEO from the beginning?
Well, we wanted to take the time to make sure we have, we should be find the right person, to solicit for the right person. It will be, this was more of a local, regional search. It'll be a broader search, because we know the position is important. We know we want to reach out far and wide to find the right candidates, and to also, we wanted to find the right people on our search committee. And we do have a search committee for the permanent CEO, and that includes some people that have been suggested by the city. I think one person that you suggested to us. We are trying to make that committee as broad as possible, so that we have representation from all areas of the city.
And I appreciate the opportunity to provide input on who serves on that committee.
Thank you.
So, Todd, this is your first day. Welcome. And you have re-engaged, I think, M. Oppenheim, Mr. Lyles, to begin the search for a permanent...
That's been part of the process, once we engage them, so...
So you engaged them in...
Finding the interim and finding the permanent is all part of the same process with them.
So you had one contract with them, one to...
One contract, yes.
And when did you initiate that contract?
I don't have the exact date, but it was...
Can someone from your team tell me when that was?
Yes. I think it was mid-April.
So, we went two and a half months before we engaged a search firm? Can you explain why?
Well, we wanted to find the right search firm, and as I said before, we wanted to make sure we had all of the information and details about the position in place. We also wanted to make sure we had our relationships with the city and City Hall and all the representatives that we needed to engage with before we could move on to that process of searching for someone. We wanted to know what we were searching for. As I said, BOPA was in transition. That was, January was a difficult time, not only for the city, but also for us. But moving forward, we are going to be moving rapidly with that search. Hopefully, it will only take a few months. That all depends on the candidates that we get, the level of candidates that we get, and of course, the interaction between the candidates and the search committee.
When do you anticipate a permanent CEO being installed and on-boarded?
We hope this fall.
Can you be a little more specific?
It would be great if we had someone in place for Artscape. Not sure if that's going to happen with the, with the summer being an issue, summer vacations. Not quite sure, but we were hoping for the fall.
In conclusion, with respect to this line of questioning, I am deeply concerned that an entity that receives this level of financial support from the city, specifically the Board, has handled this leadership transition in this manner. I want to be very upfront about that. Deeply, deeply concerned. I want to move on to the issue regarding the recent report that there were members of the organization who attempted to trademark Artscape, which I believe would be in violation of the contract that BOPA has with the city. We have our deputy solicitor, Mr. Salisbury, here. Salisbury, can you opine on that very quickly to make sure I understand that correctly?
Sure. So, the city learned last year that BFAI had applied for the, to trademark Artscape, understanding that this was something that the city felt like was ownership, intellectual property that properly belonged to the city. The city opposed that trademark application, and the U.S. Patent and Trademark Office granted our motion opposing BOPA's, sorry, BFAI's trademark for Artscape earlier this year.
Thank you. In short, removing the legalese. This effort would have been a violation of our contract with BOPA, is that correct?
Yeah, I think, I mean, it would have, it didn't, it would have been not lawful, because the city owned the, we felt like this was the city's intellectual property.
Thank you. Was the Board aware of this effort to attempt to trademark the city's intellectual property?
Not the specific effort, not the paperwork involved with this. I learned once, I found out that the city had, when I came aboard, this was after January, that the city had rejected that application, and it was one of the first things that we discussed with the Mayor's Office. They let us know that this is something that should not have been done. It was done by previous leadership, who are no longer there, so I really can't speak to the specific details. I've never seen the paperwork, actually. I know trademarks have been talked about at the higher level, probably since 2016, 2017, when there was an issue with the Light City trademark, that was under Bill Gilmore's reign, but only at the Board at the higher level. So, as far as specifics, no, that would have been handled by the previous leadership and staff who are no longer there.
I think it's important to note the key difference between the instance that you just referenced with respect to Light City. That was a consultant of BOPA's that attempted to trademark Light City, which was in violation of the contract, not staff at BOPA. So I think that's important to note for the record.
Sure. But I do understand it is a, it was a mistake, so...
Yes.
That is something that we would not even attempt to do under this leadership.
So, an effort... So, an effort to take a legal step of that magnitude, wouldn't that normally go through the normal governance structure of the organization, specifically the board? Wouldn't that require board approval to make an attempt at something of that nature?
I would say the higher-level discussion in general about the trademark, it would have been great if the board at that time had seen the details. So I agree with you, yes, that, it should have been, but it was not, and that is previous leadership, and we are moving forward, because, as we said, as I said, we had a discussion with the mayor's office that this should not have happened, and this will not be happening again regarding trademarks. And anything that we do is for the betterment of the city. We work, we know we work for the city. That definitely was an opportunity not to work with the city. I think this goes back to the problem with communication and lack of communication that occurred one way or another, but as I said, we are working to improve that, that level of communication. So, nothing like that would happen again under current leadership.
Have you revised your bylaws or taken any other governance action to ensure potential actions such as this in the future would actually get picked up by the board, so that the board could take appropriate action to ensure this doesn't happen again?
We have not yet, but we will do so.
What has prevented the board from doing so? Has this, I believe, happened five or six months ago, correct?
Right, right. I think there are stipulations, I'll have to check the bylaws just to see whether we need to make any amendment or not, but an amendment is a good idea. We definitely do not want this issue to come up again, and we definitely don't want the staff to have that ability without proper notification or proper guidance through the board.
How frequently does your board meet?
We meet quarterly. The executive committee meets as needed in between those periods.
Do you have board meeting minutes that reflect a discussion around this trademark issue?
I don't recall any minutes talking about the specific trademark application. Of course, all of our meeting minutes are available online.
So, just so I understand, this incident, Mr. Salisbury, when did this incident occur?
I'm not sure when the, a BOPA subsidiary had actually put in the application for the trademark. We learned of it, I think, sometime around in late spring, early summer, and then we filed our.
Of '22?
Of '22. And then we filed our opposition in January of '23. The U.S. Patent and Trademark Office granted our opposition, I think, sometime in March '23.
So, you've known about this for five months, and the board nor the executive committee has ever discussed this in a board setting?
No, we have not, not since then. We were discussing the other issues that we thought were more important, because this was in the past, and we thought the situation has moved at this point. And since I am at the leadership, leading the staff, we knew that nothing like that would happen during my realm, and nothing like that has happened during my realm. But I agree, that should be looked at by our board.
Do the other board members wish to comment on this issue never came up in a monthly executive committee meeting or a quarterly board meeting? Did anyone? And you all were aware of this since January?
No.
So, the board outside of you was not made aware of this issue?
No.
Did you not feel it appropriate to share with, at a minimum, the executive committee of the board, the fact that this incident had occurred?
We, as I said, the incident was resolved when we talked to the mayor's office, that we had agreed not to pursue it any further. As for oversight and governance, yes, we definitely should be looking at that, but that has not happened during the past five months.
This is why I stated about 12 or 13 minutes ago, that I find it very peculiar for an organization to have a board chair running the day-to-day, because there is a conflict that exists, which you, leading the day-to-day, resulted in your board not knowing about this issue. Which court was this in, Mr. Salisbury?
This was before the U.S. Patent and Trademark Office.
I'm not a judge or a lawyer, but that seems pretty important to me. So it's quite disappointing that this was not communicated to the rest of your board, and I'm assuming to the other two executive committee members, the first you heard of this was this week, when it was reported in the media? Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. We've been asked to approve a $2.7 million appropriation to BOPA this year. This is, these governance and administration questions and concerns that exist for me are going to give me trouble sleeping at night tonight. Let me ask one more question on administration, and then I'm going to close out and move to my colleagues. Was there a reason that one of the other senior staff within the organization were not selected to fill in as acting CEO or interim CEO immediately upon the previous CEO's separation from the organization?
At the time, none of the senior staff wanted to move into that position.
You all are both senior staff in the organization? Is that, is that your understanding that that statement is true?
We recommended to the board that someone internal in the organization be named the interim. We expressed that early on in the process in late January, early February, and that option was not selected by the board.
And that individual was willing to take on that role?
Yes.
Mr. Lyles, can you please explain?
Let me, can I clarify that a little bit, please?
Please, please.
The, the option was presented, it was not the preferred option from internal staff, but we told the board that if this was option that they were in favor of, we would, one of Jackie or myself would step in. And Jackie, it was actually Jackie who, I wanted to stay in the background, but Jackie said she would step into that role if needed.
Jackie is fantastic, from all my experiences working with her.
Absolutely.
Nothing but wonderful things to say about her.
Absolutely.
Ms. Downs, you're a rock star. So, to make sure I understand this, and then I'll close out here. A recommendation was made, internal staff took issue with that recommendation that was presented, but it was offered that one of the two of you, and specifically, you tapped Ms. Downs, and Ms. Downs was willing to take on the role. Can you, Mr. Lyles, please explain the discrepancy in your previous statement that no one from the organization was willing to step up and take that role?
Right. I believe you said immediately after Donna's departure. That was, we did not have any internal staff that stepped up at that point. I think we had Jackie and Brian offer later, but we had already worked towards engaging M. Oppenheim as a search firm to handle the permanent search, and also to help us select a, an interim.
Is that your understanding, that there was that gap in between the previous CEO's separation from the organization and when the offer was made on the behalf of the two of you slash Jackie as the lead?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Lyles, I really appreciate the time and attention you've given to my questions this evening. I'm about to jump to my colleagues that may have other questions. I do want to make one statement first, though. There was a suggestion made yesterday that it would be appropriate to make a cut to the city's proposed budget to support one city agency's operations, and to use the source of that funding as funding from BOPA, specifically in the amount of $1 million, which would obviously have a catastrophic impact on the arts community. And I want to be explicitly clear that that suggestion, that a million dollars be cut from funding that supports our very vibrant arts community in Baltimore City, is categorically irresponsible. I want to be very clear on the record on that, and I hope that there's no ambiguity in what I've just said in these chambers. With that, Mr. President, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I won't be long. Mr. Little, thank you for stepping in this very challenging role and attempting to navigate a really turbulent course for the past couple of months or so. I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair, and I know that you want to jump into questions. You know, I just want to reiterate exactly what the Chair just said. Art sits at the core of the city of Baltimore. I understand and know, through my own experience of growing up in the city, that art is the lifeline of many of our residents, many of our professional and amateur artists, and just as the core of who we are, creativity in the city of Baltimore. And this council is very committed to ensuring that local artists, particularly women and minority artists, who sometimes are forgotten, even in the great city of Baltimore, and the amazing artists that we have been able to illustrate throughout the world, that they sit near and dear to this council. And just like your home budget, this budget must reflect that of the city. And as the Chair has stated, is categorically irresponsible for us in such a small amount in comparison to the larger city budget, to cut anything away from the arts, more importantly, our artists. So with that, I would just want the citizens to know, I would want the BOPA community to know that this body sits in full support of strengthening the arts, and the reality is, we don't do enough. So cutting, again, is completely irresponsible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Lyles, before I go to my next colleague, you referenced the board, the board itself meets quarterly, and then the executive committee of the board meets monthly, is that correct?
Well, it meets as needed. Because of the current situation, since January, we have been meeting more regularly, yes.
And are there any other standing committees of the board?
Yes, we have a governance committee, there is the finance committee, and just recently, we had the strategic planning committee, which has disbanded because their work was completed.
Sure. And you have meeting minutes available for all of these committees, as well as the board as a whole?
We have board meeting minutes, which are published on our website, and they are made public. Committee meeting minutes are not necessarily available.
When you say?
They can be, if there are minutes. Sometimes there are not minutes.
So, there's a secretary on the board, correct?
Yes, he's behind us. Frank McNeil, yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
McNeil.
McNeil, I apologize. Mr. McNeil, you are the secretary, therefore you are charged with documenting meeting minutes, among other responsibilities, correct?
That's correct.
And you only document meeting minutes for the quarterly board meetings, is that correct?
That is correct, as well as when we have had meetings, executive committee meetings and so forth.
So, quarterly board meetings and executive committee meetings are documented?
That's correct.
Are any of those other committees, such as governance, strategic planning, finance, are those documented?
I have to check up to see if that is the case, because, you know, I'm not the committee chair of those particular committees, so as Mr. Lyles said, we've had some folks who have left the board, and so some of those folks were committee chairs and so forth, so I'm sure we could find the minutes as needed.
I would appreciate if by call of business on Monday, June 5th, that's this upcoming Monday, by call of business, if you would send me an email with all meeting minutes for the board, executive committee, and any other committees of the board dating back to January 1st of 2022. Actually, no, let's go back to January 1st of 2020. So, provide me, if you would please provide me what you have available, along with a written narrative explaining what may not be included in that first tranche of board minutes that you believe may exist, but you need additional time to track down. But at a minimum, I believe it is safe for me to have the expectation that that will include all full board meetings and all executive committee meetings dating back to January 1st, 2020. Is that a safe assumption for me to hold, Mr. McNeil?
No, I don't know that I could get that to you by Monday, no.
Which meetings, minutes are available on the website?
Our regular board meeting minutes would be available for those dates, and so I don't know about, you know, some of the other minutes that you're asking for in order to get you them by Monday.
Who's the chair of the executive committee?
The chair of the executive committee is Mr. Lyles.
Board chair.
Board chair.
What are the protocols outlined in the bylaws regarding the holding of meeting minutes? Is that outlined in your bylaws?
I know the full board meeting, it's, I think that's outlined, but as for various committees, I think that is up to the committee chair.
Okay.
We can find a full answer for that and let you know.
Well, I would appreciate.
With whatever minutes we can provide.
An email, call of business, Monday, June 5th, with comprehensive accounting of all meeting minutes that are available dating back to January 1st of 2020, those being attached to the email, along with a written narrative outlining what other meeting minutes may exist, and what are the policies or procedures related to the executive committee and other committees of the board with respect to the retention of meeting minutes for those respective committees. Is that a reasonable request that you can comply with by that deadline?
I am not sure, again, about the previous years, but, you know, I can certainly try to search and get those for you, but, you know, I will certainly give you an explanation if we need more time looking for the other minutes that you're requesting, so.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. I look forward to reviewing that email. Councilman Torrance?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
You said by call of business. What is that time?
Call of business for me is 11:59 PM. Thank you. Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, Mr. Lyles, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
I want to first, I'm going to just be transparent. BOPA did adhere to the requirements last year of our cut. Ms. Dorsey has been very transparent in assisting us with ensuring that disruptions to neighborhoods and communities is clearly communicated. I'm troubled, because listening now to this conversation about leadership and controls in your organization have me troubled as someone who has a legal background, especially with a patent application. I'm just going to ask Mr. Salisbury to humor me for a second. Mr. Salisbury, was the application by BOPA filed per se or by council?
I believe it was filed by outside council. I'll double-check on that, but that's my understanding.
Thank you. So, Mr. Wentz, do you have council that is on retainer with BOPA?
Yes, we do.
And how much does, do you have them on retainer for?
It's not on retainer, I'm sorry. It's not on retainer, it's on an as-needed basis.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Lyles, do you know the total expenditure expended for, in terms of attorney's fees, as well as the initial application for the trademark?
I do not know offhand, but I can find that information for you.
Perfect. I would like that by close of business on Monday. Mr. Wentz, what is the trigger for board approval for expenditures by the CEO?
CEO approves any expenditures over $10,000. The CEO also reviews all payments that are distributed.
For clarification, that's up to $10,000?
Including up to $10,000.
Okay.
It's not necessary, but we have that as part of our procedure.
I would like to see the approval process for the actual expenditure for the trademark application. The reason why is because something I learned in law school is the typical cost for an application is between $14,000 and $18,000 without counsel in terms of actually filing it. And traditionally, most trademark attorneys typically cost up to $40,000. So that is a significant expenditure that should have been approved by the board. With relationship to that, that's why I have serious concerns in terms of the funding that we send to your organization at this time, because I want to make sure the cost controls are there. Mr. Wentz, how much, and I'm just being very clear from looking at your financial documents from last year, what is the percentage of funding that the city of Baltimore contributes to your total budget, operating budget?
Depends on, because of the large amount that we expend on festivals and we receive for festivals, in a non-festival year, probably about 60%. In a festival year where we're fundraising additional funds, it's more like 35% to 40%.
From looking at the documents that I received last year, accounting for the state funds that were available to you, as well as fundraising dollars that you received on behalf of the city of Baltimore, my calculation is around 80% of your budget is due to the city of Baltimore.
The calculation that I recall is 68% or 69%.
May you provide me by close of business how you arrived to that number as well?
Absolutely.
And I would like to have the finance department to confirm it as well.
And just to confirm, Mr. Councilman, and they did use outside counsel for that, for the trademark application?
Thank you. I would like to know the fees explicitly, so I would like to know in total the attorney hours, as well as the paralegal hours, in addition to the initial application. And Mr. Salisbury, did they file a response to our opposition?
They did not.
So I would like to know the total fees for the initial application, the consultation, and then the total amount of attorney hours expended for this. The reason why I ask that is because we have not had Artscape, and the time that would be considered to actually entertain any trademark with an attorney could cost, is easily 20 hours, right? The trademark, design, the thought behind it, and just the marketing portions of it to put together an application, this application could extensively be at least 30 pages that someone had to approve and review. Mr. Salisbury, how long was their actual application?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Do you know how long their actual application was?
How many pages the document was?
Yes.
I'm not sure about that, but we could look into that.
Okay. I would like to have a copy of the initial emails and thought process behind the actual Mr. Lyles, how many board members have departed from BOPA since January?
Oh, I think we've had four or five.
And in January, what's the total composition of your board?
It was, I believe, seven or eight.
So five members departed from a seven-person board, seven or eight-person board since January?
Right. They were longtime members, and it was part of attrition and the regular process of board governance.
Mr. McNeil, are you the chair of the governance committee?
I'm the recent chair of the governance committee, yes, but I was part of it prior to, but the governance chair did depart this year.
With your assistance, I would like to compare the terms of each person on the board to see if those persons were cycled off or they just resigned in general. The reason why is I just want to make sure that we are clear about whether their departure was a scheduled departure or whether it was a departure in protest to where the current directional organization is going. And I would like that by close of business on Monday. My next question is related to the farmer's market. Has the person in charge of the farmer's market departed?
The person that was in charge has departed?
Yes.
But we have moved someone else up into that position.
It was my understanding that that was a one-person team, or am I incorrect?
It was one person that was officially in charge, but we had other people that assisted in that effort, and we still do, so it was very easy to move someone up into that role.
Okay. And have you posted the position for hiring?
I know we are posting positions. That is one. Have we posted that at this point?
Yes, we have posted a position for a co-farmer's market manager.
And what is the total number of vacancies in your organization? Total number of vacancies in our organization currently?
Oh, vacancies right now? Do we have vacancies? Vacancies, right.
Yeah, I think there are two or three, and then we have some additional positions that we were going to, that we were planning to hire that are not vacancies from prior departures.
My understanding that there were more than two or three, more so leaning towards the number 10 was something that was told by a staff person to me, so I just want to make sure.
10?
Yes. I just want to make sure I confirm. So can you provide documentation for your staff roles from January 1 of last year to now? That way we can see. And just for privacy concerns, I just want the initials of the staff persons in their positions.
We will happily provide that.
With that, I yield back to the Chair.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Porter, and then Ramos.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Lyles. I had a quick question. I'm on the BOPA's website right now, and I'm trying to locate the meeting summaries after June of 2022. Do you have those?
We can provide those for you. The, they're not there after June? It should be-
No, they're not there after June or January of this year. When was your last board meeting?
Our last board meeting was January. Unfortunately, we did not have a, was it January? It was April. Last board meeting was April? March. Last board meeting was March.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we did not have a quorum, so we could not approve the minutes-
Okay.
-from the previous meeting.
Okay.
That's why those two meeting minutes are not there.
Okay. When was your last annual filing for the fiscal year of your, when was your last annual filing to the Internal Revenue Service?
Brian, you would have the details on that? Last filing for-
Yeah, no worries. I'll repeat it. When was your, when was your last annual filing for, to the Internal Revenue Service?
Our 990 for the fiscal year 2022 was filed in May.
In May of last year?
May of 2023.
May of 2023?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like the, I like the last three years of your 990s sent by call of business on Monday. The reason why I bring that up, with the Internal Revenue Service, Part 4, Line 8 asks whether an organization contemporarily documents, meeting, or written actions undertaken during that year by its governing body, and they have to be posted to your website. And so I just want to see how you all answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, prior to, well, many years ago, I had a role as a consultant where, you know, I was board chair of an organization. The executive left. I did take on several of the roles, but we, it was a much smaller organization, and then we tried to hire right away. So I understand, you know, kind of where you ended up going, but please understand the concern of this organization, of the council, because when we found out the trademark issue, that was just the ultimate in, really a slap in the face, frankly, to us, because, you know, Artscape is near and dear to everybody's heart, and it belongs to Baltimore. So that actually should have been the first item of business that you took care of in terms of making sure that something like that wouldn't happen again. But you're obviously trying to get things back in order. I want to ask about the book festival. It did not happen last year, well, it did, actually, in Waverly.
The Waverly Book Festival.
The Waverly Book Festival.
And this year, I went to this year's Waverly Book Festival.
And so I'm wondering, you did, the BOPA did have the budget for the book festival, and so I'd like to know what you normally spend on the Baltimore Book Festival and where that money was spent this year that you didn't do the official book festival.
We can, do you have an answer to that, to the-
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but we can provide them for you.
But we can provide those, definitely.
If you could, that would be wonderful. I'd like to, I'd like to know and be very clear when I say that the Waverly Book Festival was a huge success. It makes sense to have the Baltimore Book Festival in a neighborhood where there are bookstores and libraries. And so I'm looking forward to many subsequent years of the Baltimore Book Festival being in Waverly. The other question I had was the Public Art Commission, recent, I would say a year and a half ago, deaccessed, well, they've been working with us on the public art in Lake Clifton, the school, Lake Clifton School.
Yes.
And there were five, there were eight pieces of art in the school. There, three of them were deaccessioned, deaccessioned by the Public Art Commission under BOPA. I won't go into all the details, it'll take me all day to talk about it. However, I'd like to know what, how many in the last 10 years, other pieces of art, city art, that the, that the Public Art Commission deaccessioned? And I realize that these mosaics are going to be very expensive to take out of Lake Clifton. I am working very hard to take them out. I know nothing about this, but I'm working very hard to get them out, because it is extremely important to the alumni that they have at least some pieces of their building in order to give them, you know, the history that they deserve. Also, that school, there is a lot of public art in that school for a reason. It was one of the only places, back when the school was built in 19, in the 1960s, where people from East Baltimore, black families from East Baltimore could go see art, okay? So it is very upsetting to me that the Public Art Commission would deaccession three pieces of its own art. So what I'm wondering is, has the Public Art Commission ever deaccessioned any other pieces? And where have they, where were they located in the last 10 years? These three pieces, all of the artists have passed. So there's no way that the artist can come back and try to save these pieces. So it's now up to us, the alumni, me, who has no idea what's going on here, and also the BMA has agreed to help in some way, but I need to make sure that that happens. And I want a commitment from BOPA that they will help me with this. Even though you have deaccessioned these pieces, meaning that they are no longer Baltimore City Art, they should be, and you need to help me with this.
We'll definitely help you with that. Public art is a particular love of mine. Now, we administer and assist the Public Arts Commission. We try to assist in funding whenever we can, but we are not the Public Arts Commission, but we can definitely-
You staff the Arts Commission, BOPA staffs the Arts Commission, Arts Commission, and it is, the Arts Commission is officially with, you know, BOPA according to, you know, state law. So I got the email from BOPA, I expect to get the email back from BOPA around these pieces.
We can certainly find that answer for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, any other questions? Did we add the submission of the, forgive me if this was already added, the submission of the 990s? That's already been asked?
Apology.
I received some, I received some last year, according to their financials.
Okay. Let's just make sure we have all the 990s that have been submitted.
Yes, for three.
Yes, since 2020, last, the last three 990s. I look forward to reviewing them, as I know there's questionnaires on there specifically related to governance practices. Councilman Torrance?
I have one last question. I know this is a personnel matter that you probably won't give me the answer to, but did Ms. Sawyer receive a severance?
Yes.
Did that severance exceed $10,000?
Yes.
Did the board approve of that severance?
It was approved.
Was it reflected in your minutes?
It was just recently approved. It was a long process. I really can't go into complete details, because it is a personnel matter.
I just wondered, because I believe, based off the budget book, her position was paid for by the city of Baltimore. It was one of the positions accounted for in our actual allocation. So I just want to be clear about the severance should have been in discussions with the city of Baltimore, as it was funding provided to you from us. So I just want to make sure that we have that conversation and later date.
Certainly.
And just like clarification on that, you said, without getting into the specific details of the severance, the severance was approved by whom was it? The entire board or the executive committee?
The executive committee.
And was that approved during a meeting of the executive committee or over email?
It was, I'll have to check on that. It may have been an email or a, or a video conference determine-
You mentioned that it was-
Detailing the details.
You mentioned that it was approved recently? How recently?
That would have been within the past month, actually.
Do the other members of the executive committee remember the forum in which that
There was some conversation, it was under negotiation, so yes, we do remember the discussions around that, so it was a-
No, thank you. I understand there were discussions, but a decision was made, which must have been a vote of the board. I'm asking, did the vote of the board occur at an in-person meeting? Did it happen in a virtual meeting, or did it happen via email?
It was a virtual, it was definitely a virtual meeting. We were not together as a, as a group to approve that, so.
So a virtual meeting that included video and audio, such as Zoom or Microsoft Teams or WebEx, correct?
To my knowledge, yes.
Were you present for that?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckler, were you present?
Yeah.
Microphone, please.
I'm not sure that meeting was recorded.
I understand, but it was a, it was a virtual audio/video meeting, correct?
Yeah, there also was email in reference to her severance. So there was a whole package.
Right, but the decision was made over the virtual meeting, correct?
I'm not even sure. I'd have to look back, but I know it was both, is my recollection, is that we had a meeting and even tried to reach out to other board members.
Again, I remain gravely concerned about the governance of this organization when a decision was made in the past month to approve a severance package, and three members of the executive committee are before this committee, and no one is in a position to tell me the forum over which that decision was made. Especially considering all three executive members present here today were a part of that decision to make that decision. Okay. Mr. Lyles and team, well, Mr. Lyles and the board, I appreciate you all attending today. I look forward to receiving communication on behalf of all of the requests of this entire committee and council by no later than call of business, 11:59 PM, Monday, June 1st. Sir, welcome. This has probably not been the most ideal first day, but I've heard great things about you. And to Brian and Jacqueline and the entire staff at BOPA, I cannot tell you how much our city council president- I cannot tell you how much our city council president, myself, this committee, the entire council appreciates the incredible work that you all do every day to promote the amazing artists that we have in our city and to put on world-class events that help showcase our city to not just the state and the country, but the entire world. Thank you, and I, and I hope that, I wish you all well as you continue that, that, that great work on behalf of the city. Thank you. The committee's now in recess. We'll be reconvening Monday, June 5th at 9:00 AM sharp.